Like to call today's legislative meeting to order for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. I'd ask that we stand to observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just want to remind everybody that we are live streaming today. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The October twenty third, two thousand and twenty four workshop meeting minutes and the October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four legislative meeting minutes. I would take a motion to approve both minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the workshop and legislative meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Breeze, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Now for the October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four salary board meeting minutes, I'd take a motion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Breeze, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
The ayes have it.
Not the abstention of the controller.
The the controller for the record is abstaining from the vote due to her absence. All right, executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Pease.
Good morning, Commissioners. There were two executive sessions held between meetings. The first on November twelfth, the commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the two thousand and twenty five budget, the general election, the county's designated tourism promotion agency, and matters of personnel. In addition to the solicitor's office, President Judge Scott Evans and Director of Budget and Finance, Christopher Davis, were in attendance to discuss budget matters. The second meeting on November thirteenth, the commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding board membership and appointments and contracts.
Any questions for Mr. Pease? Hearing none, this is the first opportunity for public participation today on agenda items only. And I know we've had some discussion about this in the past. We will also offer public comment in our elections board meeting, which we plan to convene as well. That will be offered right after the approval of the minutes. But this, yeah, we'll entertain any discussion at this point, but there will be an opportunity for public discussion even on the election board item. So is there anybody that wants to to come up and speak before the board related to any county related matters that are on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to call to order the election board meetings and have Mr. Spackman come up front. The first item is the approval of minutes for the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty four election board meeting, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Breeze, second, second by Commissioner Douglas, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. This time, you know, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that wants to comment on any election board items. No public comment, all right, Mr. Spackman. Good morning.
Good morning to the Board of Elections.
Happy day after your birthday.
Thank you, appreciate that, sir. Before the board today is the first certification of the results of the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four general election that I'd ask that the board sign off on today. As expected, this was a very busy election, turnout around seventy four percent, which is only slightly lower, lower than twenty twenty's turnout of seventy five. On election day, we had over twenty five hundred provisional ballots that we have gone through. There's still around six hundred that were rejected due to such issues such as the voter not being registered, registered in different county or incomplete affidavit. These rejections were challenged and the hearing by the election board will be held this Friday, of course. Still have a lot of work ahead of us. As is very likely, the Secretary of the Commonwealth will announce a recount for the U.S. Senate race. If there is a recount, the Secretary will announce it for tomorrow. And we will have until the twenty sixth to complete that. There are no questions, I respectfully request that the Board of Elections provide first certification, the results from the Dolphin County General Election on the fifth, twenty twenty four.
Would like to ask my colleagues.
I have a quick question, so you said seventy four percent turnout in two thousand and twenty four and seventy five percent turnout in two thousand and twenty. But there were a lot more registered voters this time, so technically there's much more turnout than four years prior, correct, as far as population?
Exactly, yeah.
It's just percentage of registered voters that actually turned out.
You're absolutely correct.
Understood.
You don't have those numbers, do you, Chris?
Not yet, no. I hopefully will have more of these specific numbers and even greater stats on next week for final certification.
So for the sake of the public, just because I think this is really important, because, you know, this is my first rodeo, right? This is my first time certifying, you know, an election in the fall and going through a first certification. Can you maybe speak to the public of what a first certification means, just in the sense of, I know there's a lot of misinformation, you know, and I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to kind of express the process. This will be a first certification, there will be a follow up and then a final, or how does this typically work? Just so people understand.
Absolutely, thank you for the question. So this is the first certification and they're within five days, but we'll do it next week. And next Wednesday will be the final certification.
Okay.
So there's always the first unofficial and then the final certification. And then this year, if there is a recount, we'll have one more meeting specifically for the recount as well. And it might be the final week, hopefully. Let you know once.
Understood, and that'll that'll require an amended certification of some kind potentially? Or it just depends on the reason?
Exactly, yeah.
Understood, now that's very helpful. I appreciate all your work and the work of your staff. I know this has been an incredible challenge and a heavy lift for for your team. And I just really appreciate the professionalism which you and your team have operated in and and, yeah, just all the volunteers as well, those who, you know, who worked across the county for this election and the work that continues to go on that people aren't seeing. They think the election's over and there's still quite a bit of work happening and quite a bit of work to be had. And just appreciate all the efforts, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Breeze.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of my colleagues' comments and just say what a remarkable job was done by the election team and the twelve hundred volunteers. And this happened to be a presidential election, which was your first as the director. And I know everything that goes into it and the work that leads up to it, the months in advance and then the day of, still going on now, so I want to thank you and your staff and the volunteers for the great work that they did and are still doing. So thank you, wonderful job.
Thank you, Mr. Spackman, obviously. I was out to talk to a number of the election workers even Saturday as they were strapped to their desks as they were for many of the prior weeks. I don't know anywhere that has a more dedicated team, more competent team, more diverse team, more committed team to ensure that the outcomes of the election are as as folks have voted. We know that just when you think it's over, there's a whole lot more work to do. And we're we're truly grateful for the dedication of the staff and the continued work that that lies ahead. You know, so I don't think we can say thank you enough to the volunteers, your leadership. And I know this was extraordinarily challenging, but, you know, that that those challenges reveal the character. And I know our team is very, very capable and strong and well led, so I want to appreciate your efforts. I know that we'll be together again Friday related to that process. And at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to provide the first certification of the votes cast at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four municipal election.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeze, is there any discussion?
I just want to follow up on what you just said about Friday, can you let folks know what's going to be occurring?
Friday, there was an appeal filed that would challenge all of the provisional ballots that were not counted in this election as a part of the the close Senate race that those will all be under review and there will be sort of a quasi judicial hearing that happens with the election board here on Friday and it is scheduled for one P M. So for those of you who are watching, that that's the time and that's the 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 place where that those discussions and appeals will be taking place in front of the election board.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign, the ayes have it, thank you, Mr. Spackman.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Harwood.
Yes.
I'm gonna, excuse me, recommend that you do have a second public comment before before you adjourn.
Okay.
This meeting.
Great.
Where am I, son? Second, I can do it. My son, here? Hold on. I sign this one? I just signed.
That's great, that's fine. As recommended by the solicitor, we will offer one final time for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to participate?
I would like to make a motion to move Swetera Township First Precinct. We already went over this, but given that the election is now passed and that we have now seen some of the accusations that have been made at that particular space bear out in someone being charged with a crime. We were we were given a report on that and now we've seen the realities of that on display. And I'd like to make a motion to move Swetera Township First Precinct. I believe Elections has a plan for that, to go to a school. And I'm going to continue to make that motion in election board hearings.
A motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll second it for a point of clarification and discussion.
I turned to the solicitor and asked, does that need to be something that we would advertise prior to its consideration?
Yes, I would have that on an agenda with the notice.
So we will be having a.
So I'll make I'll make a motion, I'll amend my motion to place on the agenda for our next election board hearing next week, the moving of Swetera Township First Precinct under the plans in which we had already investigated and prepared for a move to, I believe it's Tri-County School, is that accurate? Or, I forget the with the school in which we were supposed to be moving it to.
As, again, that motion's been made, I think it's already seconded.
Are you, well, I'm making a motion that it goes on the agenda next time, not a motion.
I will, I will second it for purposes of placing it on the agenda for further discussion and potential action.
Okay, any additional discussion? Chris, does that give you enough time to prepare? I know we've got a lot of stuff going on here. Okay, please. Let me just wait.
Yeah, we'll have to make some postings in the neighborhood today. Part of the election code.
Can can the motion simply be that we're committed to moving it? Even if it doesn't, it it doesn't need to be moved until the spring, right? Like it doesn't need to be posted until the next election. I'm simply saying, given the my my intent with my motion, and if I need to amend it, I'll amend it again. My intent with the motion is to say in the future elections, we're not using this as a location.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
And I don't know, again, I'd have to confer to legal advice. I don't know if we can commit ourselves to doing that without an actual vote from from the board perspective. We can commit ourselves to reviewing prior to, you know, the end of this year. So we are well prepared to be able to address this action item prior to this spring election. So, I mean, the only challenge I see now would be one of logistics for Chris to be able to do the notification. He's trying to do recounts, there may be a recount that's ordered from the Secretary of State. I just don't want to put him in a position where they're not able to do what he's is currently in front of him. And making a commitment from the board's perspective to review this before the end of the year gives us plenty of time prior to the spring election for us to be able to make a decision on that vote.
I'm fine with prior to the end of the year, as long as it's reviewed by the end of the year on on the agenda. I'm fine with that, I don't want to bog down your offices anymore than they already are with with the challenges of the election. But I want to make it clear also that I have nothing left to review. My my mind's made up on this matter, so we can certainly take time to review it, I have nothing left to review.
There's just a couple of legal requirements in order to make those postings and moves that we need to make sure we adhere to. And if we can allow Chris the opportunity to be able to get through this before he moves to do that. And then I would ask publicly that Vince work with Chris to place a future election board meeting prior to the close of this year to be able to review and discuss this particular matter.
In the event of a recount, convention is due. Okay.
Either or, we will commit to doing it before the end of the year. And just, again, there was a motion made and seconded, the idea that we will do it before the end of this calendar year.
Is a motion necessary for for this action?
No, right now, there's a motion to put it on the next agenda. You could do that and then table it if it doesn't work logistically with Mr. Spackman. Or you don't need a vote and just commit to this review and and put it on before the end of the year.
I vote, I'll 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 remove my motion and just take it on that we will have it by the end of the year, that it will be on the agenda. And I'm I'm committed to doing that publicly. Okay, so.
Are you okay with that?
Well, we have a amended first motion.
You have to withdraw it.
And then I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Do you?
I'll withdraw my second then. Yes.
Any additional discussion? Yep, I already did, I'm getting public comment from the right, but I think we've already allowed for public comment before the end of the meeting, so at this point, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Is, well, I I believe I kind of cut off public comment by my by my comments, sorry. I didn't mean to do that, I just didn't know exactly where I would fit that in.
All right. Yeah, well, you cut me off because my public comment is you guys should make a motion to move the polling place from the Bressler Firehouse. We talked about it before. It's under a lot of scrutiny, under a lot of investigation. It doesn't make sense why the county would want to continue doing business with a firehouse whose attached social club and board is accused of systemic racism. And by just simply just like pretending we're not accepting anyone to just not accept black people. And now on top of it, we know that people there have sticky fingers and are taking money. So how, from themselves, so it seems there's no oversight there. It doesn't seem like a place the county should be doing business with. And there's a wonderful school, my kid went there, Tri-Community Elementary, it's right up the street. And it's available and it's a part of the community already, people are aware of it, people know where it's at. Who we live there, and I think it would be absolutely acceptable to everyone in our community to go vote there. So, yeah. My public comment is you guys absolutely need to get to it, there's no reason to keep doing business with this corrupt firehouse. That's now not even serving the county in any capacity or township in any capacity. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the election board meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Directors and guests, salary board, I think we have Ms. Fay Fisher with us today, morning Fay. Directors and guests, salary board, I think we have Ms. Faye Fisher with us today. Morning, Faye.
There are no changes to the salary board packet, so it stands as presented at last week's meeting.
Is there any questions for Faye on the salary board packet?
Yes, I'm gonna continue with my questions I've asked before, and that is all of the items A, B, C, D, and E within the departments falling within their budgeted 2024 numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions on the salary items? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the salary board items as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Personnel packet.
Uh, there were also no changes to the personnel packet since last week's meeting.
And we did vote on several items last week, correct? They were what, one through 18 today, 22 through 25, and 32 through 47 would be required to be voted on today. Do we have a vote or a motion to vote on personnel packet items number one through 18, 22 through 25, and 32 through 47? The other ones were actually acted on in the previous packet.
Is there a concern in the packet this week that I'm forgetting?
I don't believe they were all present. Issues, none that I had. Budget here, that's correct. That is no longer part of the packet.
It's no. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, okay, that we approve the personnel packet. I'll second.
Any discussion? That is not included today. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Faye.
Thank you.
Budget and finance, Mr. Davis.
Commissioners.
Morning.
I have no changes to the investment report. Just a quick notice, I'm sure you're aware of the Fed net last week and lowered interest rates by a quarter of a percent. So I've started to get in touch with our current banks to see what rates we can get, what they're willing to do since that meeting's now concluded. That was kind of our sticking point. For the purchase order packet, I have no changes from what was submitted last week. It's ready for your approval.
Any questions on the purchase order packet or the actual budget and finance investment report? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for the adoption of the purchase order packet as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. See you this afternoon. And just for the reference, today we start our budget hearings at 1:00 PM today. And we, we go through the week. Do you just want to announce publicly for the record the budget time so we are all aware?
Yeah, we will start today at 1:00 PM. Tomorrow and Friday are both at 9:30. Tomorrow is a full day. We will break for lunch. Scheduled at noon, depending on along the morning picks. And that Friday is scheduled till so 9:30.
Any questions for Mr. Davis before he leaves? Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk, Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Pies.
Commissioners, I have no, nothing to report on this. There are questions of me.
Any questions of Mr. Pies? Hearing none, the solicitors report, Mr. Owens.
There are 59 items requiring board action. All of those items have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitors Office for action by the board.
Is there any questions for Mr. Owens? All right, is there any matters today from 1 to 59 that need to be pulled out and or voted separately?
Yes. Uh, item one. Item 19. Item 20. Item 21. Item 22.
So item 1, 19, 21.
20, 21, 22.
20, 21, and 22.
19 through 22.
Okay. Anything?
Did you repeat those again, please?
Said 1, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just, I'm not asking to pull it out. I just have a question. To get a summation of item 13, agreement between Dolphin County and JSR Appraisal Group Incorporated to complete appraisal report of 2745 North Front Street, MDJ Pianca's old office.
So I'm conflicted from commenting on that.
Do we have anybody in here that can?
Well, I can speak. Depending on what you want to know, I mean, the appraisal fee is $1,500. And it is to get an appraisal for MDJ Pianca's office so that we can, uh, whether to move forward with the office that we're looking to move them into. It's my understanding.
Okay, so this is the old office. We want an appraisal so we can sell that office. I, I believe this is the.
It's the new office. I'm confused why it's listed that way, but no, it's, it's to move from like to the new off, like a, a office that is being considered.
All right, can you say that one more time?
Sure. So we need to do an appraisal for a property that we are looking to move MDJ Pianca into. And we are trying to figure out if that is any appro, if it, if what we are being offered for the lease is appropriate. And within market.
Thank you.
Standards.
Can we change the wording to new office though? Or just office? If it says old office, it does assume that we've already been there.
I wouldn't call it, I, I think we should just maybe say. MDJ Pianca's office, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on 13?
Some of mine are just questions, so I, I guess it could potentially be. My question with number one is, uh, what, what portion of that contract goes to HRG?
Of this particular item, nothing, none of that, none of those dollars go to HRG. They only go to the contractor.
Okay. On 19 and 20, where do they RFP?
Those items were not.
Okay, on 21, uh, is this, it says it's for the calendar year of 2024? So this is, this is free parking that's already taken place, correct?
Correct. It's ending in just a month and a half.
So have we already made a payment or is this the payment for the entire?
This is for the whole year. That is the total sum for the whole year.
Pay this? Is it the end of the year we pay whatever they bill us or how does this work?
So it is an amount, from my understanding, that was determined in their budget for last year. So the commissioners when.
I don't like me being here.
Correct. Um, it was the end of last year. We, they accepted the budget provided by SP plus. And this was included, this payment and this dollar amount was included.
Uh, I, I will approve it simply because it was prior, it was committed prior to my coming here. But I would like to have a more robust conversation about the, the free parking and whether or not it's actually doing things for the businesses in downtown Harrisburg. Like it's, like, like the purpose of it is. There's just some questions there, but I'll prove it simply under the matter that was already. I have to agree with Commissioner Douglas on this one. We should next year have this at the beginning of the year if we're doing it as opposed to with one month to go. Because if we were to vote no today, they'd be out $146,300. But we need to just from housekeeping purposes, have that beginning of the year as opposed to.
Understood.
Thank you. Number 21, or sorry, number 22, can you remind me what this is? Again, the EAP services?
Would be Employee Assistance Program, which is, you know, i- if individuals were struggling with personal issues.
So, and, and this is, this is why I want, I want the community to be aware that if one of our employees is dealing with, you know, a mental health struggle, that this gives them three free, am I correct? Three free.
It's actually now six. We're going to get with it with this renewal.
Great. Uh, and I just, I just want to emphasize the commitment Dolphin County is making to the mental health of our employees, ensuring that they have the opportunity to, um, to have services. Certainly, I think we provide great healthcare, but also provides that, but this is on top of that, uh, that they can get services that they need, so.
Confidently.
So I'm not pulling these necessarily because I'm in opposition of pulling them to highlight them. That's why we don't necessarily have to pull them. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's all. We don't need to pull them and vote separately. I just want, uh, actually I do want to pull 19 and 20 separately on this.
Okay.
But the rest, I just wanted those clarifications and I was going to make those in them being separate, but we can make them together like my colleague did.
So, um, at, at this point, uh, the only two you want pulled are 12, 19 and 20.
20, yeah.
Okay.
For separate vote.
Do we have a motion to approve items today, one through 59, with the exception of 19 and 20?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pries, second by Commissioner Douglas. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Right, 19 and 20? Do we have a motion to approve items 19 and 20?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pries. Do we have a second? I will second those items. Point of discussion.
I just simply want to say I've been saying RFP everything since I got here and I'm just going to start voting down things that aren't RFP. It's not personal. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in any way opposed to these companies or businesses. But, uh, but at a certain point, like enough's enough. We got to start RFP and stuff. These are long-term contracts. They're going to outlive my term, some of them, that we just keep approving and approving and approving with no regard for competition and getting the taxpayers the best deal. I'm not saying these are bad deals. I just want to make that clear. But we would have no way of knowing because we didn't put it out to bid. And just common sense business says you want to get the best deal. You want to put it out to bid. And so I'm just going to continue to vote no when I highlight them, when I find them in agendas. It's not personal. I just want that to be clear. I believe our tax assessment office does great work. I believe Greg's leadership is, is clearly on display and running a very professional office. This isn't personal. It's just simply, uh, I can't keep asking for it behind scenes and then, uh, not start bringing that into public discussion.
And the only thing I would note on 19 and 20, uh, both agreements, uh, were both at no, no additional cost over the next three years. So the idea that they were negotiated with, you know, the cost and the long-term partnership related to software, that's the basis of all of our tax collection software, assessment software. I mean, there's a, uh, e- even in a world where we don't have a uniform tax collection system, which I'd love to have in Pennsylvania. I know we've worked with Treasury Creason to really look at how we efficiently operate in local municipalities through tax collection. And again, all of that is built on the DevNet software process. So that's a, uh, again, to, to make a significant change like that would take almost a year or two of planning and discussion, which we're willing to have to see what options are out there. But that is one that has a great deal of, um, system ramifications, um, related to making a changeover. And, uh, we have probably one of the most efficient systems related to that anyway. So, um, I, I appreciate you raising the issues, but, um, there, there are two, at least from my perspective and review, that have also no associated increase in cost, which is, uh, is important to note.
I, I have to again bring up as I did before that this board stated a month ago or so, we're RFPing everything. And, but we're not RFPing everything. And I do understand your explanation here, but a couple of weeks ago, we did an RFP pictometry for this, under the same tax assessment office, and now we're not RFPing, uh, the prior communications or DevNet. I understand your explanation is no increase, but either we are going to RFP everything or we're not going to RFP everything. Now, I'm going to vote on this again, but I, once the new year starts, if we're not RFPing everything, as this majority of the board stated, we're going to, and I agree with, which would make it a unanimous statement, I will not vote on any contracts beginning in 2025 that we are not going to RFP if we say we're going to RFP. Either do it or you don't. But I do understand the, the explanation here. It's not an increase. I agree with Commissioner Douglas that offices run very well. But I just got an email literally within the last 24 hours advising of, of this, so from the, the director. But again, apartments run well, but if we're saying we're doing it, and starting in 2025, we better do it. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments and, and we're, we're attempting to try to provide some education around RFP process. Both the term, the staff I reached out to C cap and attempt to, to see if they would be willing to come in and educate both solicitors, staff of related to RFP process. As you're aware, none of these answers are very simple, uh, and it, it's, you know, to change over total business processes and, and, and actions take a great deal of planning leading up to and changing, particularly as we're talking about the basis of operating systems, uh, take a significant amount. And, and there's also an expense to that as we evaluate RFPs in making those kinds of changes. I'm not saying that we shouldn't examine all those things, but, um, yeah, it, it's, it's much more challenging from an RFP perspective on some of these operating systems that, uh, the county has been built and operating well. So that being said, um, uh, there's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. For former business, Commissioner Douglas?
Don't have form of business.
I'm sorry, new business.
Do have new business, yes.
Like to make a motion, uh, I move to rescind the May 29th, 2024 motion under item one tourism grants, specifically letter U, Dolphin County EDC Great American Outdoor Show Liaison, $60,000, thereby eliminating the funding for this contract. Additionally, the motion requests that the, uh, IDA, the Industrial Development Authority, consider terminating this contract and reevaluating any other business relationship involving Jeff Haste.
Motion's been made. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it.
I have another motion. Uh, I move to remove Jeff Haste from all board positions in which he was appointed by Dolphin County, citing substantial ethical concerns over his actions as commissioner. These concerns reflect a pattern of potential misuse of authority and privilege, raising serious risks of similar issues arising in his continued service on these boards.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Um, do we have any discussion? The only concerns, I, you know, we, we raise some legal mechanism concerns that I just want to make sure that were clear that I tried to raise related to, uh, those concerns without going into detail. Just want to make sure for the record that those are noted. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Any additional new business? Commissioners, discussion and actions. Commissioner Douglas?
Previously, I raised concerns about money influencing county contracts. Some thought my words might have been too harsh. We've now learned due to Penn Live and Joshua Vaughn's reporting, Commissioner Haste accepted $325,000 in undisclosed payments from Carl Hoffman, founder and former owner of Prime Care, one of our county's biggest vendors responsible for medical care in our prison. This isn't Haste's only questionable dealing. During his time in office, he failed to disclose his wife's position at the Tourism Bureau, pushed through a million, multimillion dollar solar project that profited his friends, or his friend, landing a high-paying NRA position post-resignation, received prime board appointments, and recently interfered in a multi-year, multimillion bridge inspection contract. This is a pattern of self-service, not public service. Let's be specific, from 2017 until Haste resignation, there were 14 inmate deaths in our prison. 14. How many of those might be connected to inadequate healthcare? A question some might avoid, but I won't. We're talking about a vendor, Prime Care, that was never audited. They've been with the county since 1988. No market comparison, no RFP. Ask almost anyone about the issues that plague Dolphin County Prison, and medical neglect is at the top. Medical requests ignored, sometimes with tragic outcomes. Every single person in this county should be outraged. Commissioners are here to hold vendors accountable, to ensure they meet high standards. It was Haste's job, along with other officials, to demand an audit, and it never happened. The compromises he allowed have shaped the crisis we see in our prison today. His actions don't just reveal a lack of accountability. They reveal a callous disregard for the vulnerable, exploited while he lined his pockets, which is beyond shameful. Consider this, we commissioners make. Consider this. We commissioners make a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Haste took more than triple that from a vendor in a single year. From the time he start his payment from, from Prime, from, sorry, from Hoffman, and when he became a contractor of Prime Care in twenty seventeen, this was his salary, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars approximately, from there till the time that, that his, that, that he resigned as commissioner. This is how much he made from Hoffman and Prime Care. Who's he loyal to? Like, as a taxpayer, if you think he's loyal to you, Dauphin County wasn't his priority. It was his side hustle. And this is just what we know about. This is just what we know about. It should make everyone so angry. This isn't the appearance. It's a blatant conflict of interest. Undisclosed gifts totaling three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which went toward buying himself a home? A sellout, plain and simple. I have no other language for it. He sold out this county for a payday, and I for one am furious. The bigger question remains, who else knew? Are we supposed to believe that no one else noticed or participated? I, I may be new, but it's clear Dauphin County has been a cesspool of corruption with people turning a blind eye or even worse in on it themselves. We've allowed select vendors to profit while the needs of people, vulnerable people, inmates were neglected. Not to mention, I, I'm about to go into budget hearings in a minute where I'm gonna talk about a guy who's been at the county for seventeen years and he's making thirteen dollars an hour. And this chart exists. That doesn't happen without a system that encourages it. This isn't an isolated thing. So here's my message to anyone in this corruption. Get out. Get out. It didn't, it, it, listen, I didn't come here to profit off my seat. Tell you that. And I don't care if I lose this seat in three years because I confronted the power brokers of Dauphin County. I could care less. My mandate now, I have a clear mandate. It's so clear. To expose every vendor with cushy contracts gained through backroom deals and anyone who helped make it happen. If you're a part of this, step aside now, cuz I've uncovered this much in less than a year and I'm only getting more effective and efficient. The gig is up. The corrupt system will crumble. And Jeff Haste, as I know you're probably watching, with these large sums of money from Carl Hoffman and your blatant betrayal of the people, maybe it's time you voluntarily forfeit your pension and finally put the people of Dauphin County first. Dauphin County, we're at a crossroads. Ripping off this bandage and exposing this wound is gonna be painful. And some won't have the stomach for it, but it's the only way forward. To rebuild something truly rooted in public service. I know many employees here genuinely care about the service, uh, serving their community, public serps. Many have no connections to this corruption, but we all bear the weight of what's coming. I urge each of you to invest in the rebuild. It will be tough, painful even, but we can make a difference by rooting out this corruption and creating a system that truly serves our constituents. I am here to expose and rebuild, but one cannot happen without the other.
Uh, just want to again, uh, thank Chris Backman and his staff and the twelve hundred volunteers for the great work that they did on Election Day at the hundred and fifty-nine or fifty-eight polling places throughout the county.
One fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight. Again, the amount of time that they put in, uh, this was clearly under a ton of scrutiny, not just statewide, the Commonwealth being right in the middle of the election, but, uh, nationwide. And, uh, the, the great work that he did considering it was his first election as a director, uh, and all the eyes that were on our county. Uh, and Commissioner Hartwick, you was oversight. I told you before, I know I, I wasn't sleeping well during the elections when I was oversight. So this was a presidential that was under the microscope like none before. Uh, the great work that they did in getting those results in and tabulated and out on, uh, out on the website and providing it to the media and the, uh, the candidates and the, the residents, I think, uh, was a, a first-class operation. So, good job.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Priest. And, uh, you know, feel, uh, it important to really recognize, the great work of the county staff and leaders that I work with tirelessly, in order to function and manage county government each day. The ability to enforce and ensure that we are meeting our regulatory requirements, fiscal requirements, and the ability to provide service to extraordinarily vulnerable people are the reason why I got in the government. Uh, and the ability for us to be able to do that with caring public servants. We, we're aware of the stories of folks that are connected to county government. But I want to make it clear that that is not county government. That is not the people that I know. That's not the people that work here. That's not the people that have dedicated their life to public service beyond the ability to make a much higher paycheck. We've all been under a great deal of stress. Uh, but I know public purpose will never be outside of the sites for myself or the individuals that represent this county. And quite frankly, lead this county is one of the best levels of service in many areas. When we talk about tax assessment, we talk about Parks and Rec, the Department of the Year. We talk about our mental health director who was named the mental health director of the year in, in Pennsylvania. When we talk about our ability to run elections flawlessly, you know, all of Dauphin County is not broken. Because there are external issues that exist without, uh, uh, out of individuals that have made their choices, doesn't mean that the employees that we stand with and represent and do this job every day should not have our full and unadulterated support and ability to work alongside them in order to serve our residents. And quite frankly, those are the individuals and the residents that we serve that get you up to do this job every. The ability to provide a pathway to help, to figure out complex issues and to build something that is more responsive than folks faced the previous day. And trying to figure out to, a way to ensure that the people that we serve are not lost in the ability for us to be able to seek out both, you know, justice and a better process and practice for the operation of county government. I know I've got a thick book here of the county code, and it outlines a great deal of responsibilities we have as county commissioners. And the idea that we have a extraordinarily complex and difficult job is one that I continue to learn at, and I've been here for twenty-plus years. Uh, uh, I want to ensure that as we figure out a way to sort of dissect and root out any adverse and other interests that exist in county government that are not to the benefit of the best public interest, that we don't lose sight of both the employees that continue to bust their ass to do this job and our ability to build something better. Because to figure out a way for us just to put it to a ground level without figuring out a better pathway forward, I think may offer an opportunity to more easily get at, uh, some of those areas where I think it's been proven to be have been manipulated and used for the wrong reasons. So from my perspective, my commitment is not only to support the efforts to do that, but also, you know, as we take a look at areas like V H H and other pieces to operations of county government, figuring out ways that we can do it in a way that better serves the public. And the idea of solutions and building, please don't be disrespectful. I do not provide disrespect when you come up on the stand to you. I, I would ask that you afford me the same opportunity. You're standing here telling me stop going on and on. I, I see the mannerisms you have. So please, I'm asking you to afford me the same respect I, I afford you. And it's really important from my perspective to be able to talk about both employees and a pathway forward. And quite frankly, I think to lead with respect and love is something that we have got to continue to do and not with hate. If you're looking to hurt people, we should figure out a way to figure it, to get underneath where that is at and the trauma that exists and understand that there's not any of us that should be standing, including myself, in judgment. We should figure out a way to be able to help and to offer those opportunities for both the people that we serve, the people that are a part of county government that operate here and the people that have been entrusted to do that level of service. So with that, I just wanted to say, you know, from my perspect- perspective, you've got my commitment to root out those concerns and, and, and issues that have not been helpful to the best interests of, of county government. But you also have a double down commitment to improve those processes and improve the way that we provide a level of service and the dedication to being able to build. Does that takes ownership, responsibility, and, and a lot of tough decisions to be able to try to build it. And we need to equally spend time in getting that right, uh, as we do about trying to figure out ways to, um, you know, separate ourselves from any of the wrongdoings or personal interests of anybody from the prior court. So with that, uh, I'd certainly entertain, uh, any public comment. Of correspondence, I always forget that. Correspondence, uh, items one and two will be directed to the chief clerk and acted on appropriately. At this point, uh, it's time for public participation.
Can I make a comment really quickly?
Yes.
Um, just as a point of clarification, as an elected official and, uh, fellow department head, item twenty that was, uh, voted down by Commissioner Douglas, I just have a, a point of clarification. So we all, as department heads, elected officials, have software that we utilize in our departments that are the backbone of our departments. In order to RFP those every single time a contract comes up, um, I know you're aware that like Oracle took two years to implement. Um, and, and I am fully behind you on RFPing and getting the best, you know, um, money, you know, getting the best prices from our vendors. I just, and I volunteered to be part of the committee that's gonna look at the RFP process. I just, I just think it's hard as an elected official and a, and a department head to try and change our software every single time a contract comes up. So I'd just like you to take that into consideration. Again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't look for the best price. There's just a lot more. As Commissioner Hartwick said, there's a lot that goes into implementing software.
The corollary, and that's, that's, that's very helpful. And I think, um, the broader conversation around RFPing everything, I think is also understanding what services are kind of make or break type situations like that where it's gonna require an entire overhaul. And I think that's where I'm willing to partner to make a plan to ensure we're getting the best deal or, uh, reach out to other vendors independently to ask what their software costs so that we know we're not. So I'm just, I'm more, I just want everyone to know my motives, our competition in getting the best deal for the taxpayers. That's my only motive here. Uh, I will also say I do have another motive, and that's to, to ensure some of these vendors who have been auto, on auto-renew contracts for twenty years, get out of here. But that's just a whole separate thing.
All right. Ona Asai Swatera Township, uh, uh, first I want to say from a, a public point of view, I think that, um, as far as RFPing everything, if it could just be made known why something wasn't RFPed, I think that could also help people understand like, if it's explained ahead of time and we don't have to wait for someone to vote no on it just because they simply weren't told. From a public perspective, I also want to talk about what, uh, you saw happening back here. Um, you were going on and on and on about something that was not on topic. It didn't make sense. Nobody was saying anything bad about people working for the county other than the former commissioner. So it kind of was unclear why you were making that statement again today. You often make statements about the county, the people who work here or this or that or the other thing. No one's discounting those things, but they have nothing to do with the business here today. Um, which was talking a lot about the corruption and the rot that's within this county. And speaking on the corruption and rot that's within this county, what you saw was me on a website called, uh, it's O N B A S E dot Dauphin County dot, uh, org, I think. And you can see all the campaign finance filings, and I happened to click on some campaign finance filings. And you know what I see? I see huge dollar donations from Tom Weber from Prime Care, from H R G, huge dollar donations, and I've only so far gotten to one. So what you saw was my reaction. So looking at the amount of money that's coming into my commissioners who are voting on these things, who aren't RFPing anything, and then looking and seeing that they are also four hundred, can you put that chart back up? I mean, that's a lot just on a commissioner's salary. So I can imagine that raising money from Prime Care, a company that's killing people in our county, to reelect yourself to make that much money over four years could be a boon for some people up here. And I could see that for people who have made politics their career and sitting on stages like this, that that could be worth it for them to give contracts and to sign off on things and go on speeches that are off topic to get off of the, the topic at hand, to distract from what's happening. So it, it is important, and I come here, I take time out to be engaged. Like, I don't get paid four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year to care, but I do. So I don't appreciate you staring at me and trying to call me out in the audience when it was just my shock at how much money you're taking from these people, who you're then handing money out to out the door and making excuses for on this stage. So yeah, yeah, imagine that. So that's what was happening back there, and I think everyone should look up how much. It's not just the money directly going into your pocket. It's the money going into your campaign coffers that you are funding to take money from us. So yeah, look at all the contracts. Stop making excuses. Just say I'm sorry. It shouldn't have happened. We're getting better at it. That's all you got to say. That's all you have to say. So yeah, I think the county should look at everything. And if you can't look at anything, and like you said, if it's something important, yeah, just say like, this is why we talked about it. It's important. We're all on the same page. We're not RFPing it. In the future, if there's a viable op, you know, opportunity for something else, we will. That's all you have to say. That's transparency. You gotta stop attacking the people who are just trying to clear the rot out of this place, you know? Trying to give this county a root canal, cuz that's what it means. It had one today. So, so that's what I have to say. That's my public comment. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Any additional public comment?
I have a point of clarification, just given the comments that were just made. Uh, I have never received any campaign contributions from any vendor of the county, and that is a clear line that I draw in my campaign finances. So I just want to make that clear. Uh, nor any owner of, of vendor of, 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 uh, of a county.
Any additional public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pam Parson, City of Harrisburg. You know, it's kind of be, it's kind of like I get up on Wednesday mornings to get ready to come here. And there's always, there's always something new. And since you were talking about contracts, I'm just thinking about all the things I read this morning and all the things I heard here. And I know I've said a couple of times about, um, the county commissioners being in some ways merchants of death. And I want to remind you of that again. Um, when I look at the prison-related deaths, um, not only in the time period in which Jeff Haste was here, but in continuing, um, with a contract with a medical provider that got its start here in Dauphin County. Um, when I look at gun violence, uh, we are now up to, um, almost sixty-five, sixty-five incidences of gun violence in Dauphin County since the beginning of October. You can find that online. I did not make it up, Gun Violence Archives. You can't find it easily at, at the county level, but nationally you can find it. And again, that does not include, um, suicide by gun. Um, when I look at going back to twenty seventeen, how our rate of unhoused people has increased. And I look at that in light of what the county has paid its employees, what it actually costs right now. Any employee that you are paying less than twenty dollars an hour will have a difficulty finding an affordable place to live within Dauphin County. And I contrast that with the more than one million dollars. And I contrast that with the more than $1 million that our previous commissioner, Jeff Haste, made, and the four, over $400,000 mortgage that he took out on an over $600,000 house, that he paid more than $200,000 in cash for. A grift, an opportunity, a privilege, which is not available to very many people. And then I also look at the amount of opioid deaths since 2017 that, again, we have not looked at in any sort of real way because we're busy grifting instead of what, looking at human need. And so somehow, when there's that pledge of allegiance to the flag, and we say with liberty and justice for all, somehow in Dauphin County, that justice for all has become just us. And somehow, when members of the public come forward to hold commissioners accountable, that accountability gets transferred into we're criticizing the employees of the county. That doesn't fit. And when I looked at today's article, what was most interesting to me was the quote from Tom Weber of Prime Care, who said that he was not aware of the payments made to Jeff Haste, because it happened before he purchased the company. But he noted that Prime Care provides healthcare services to 34, 34 of the 62 Pennsylvania counties that have correctional facilities. And that the average length of our contract, this is a quote, establishes that once we obtain a contract, we have a high success rate of retaining it based upon the service we provide, but there's been no undue influence. I would say that not auditing or providing an RFP for prison healthcare is undue influence, particularly when you have at one time a sitting county commissioner who helped you get that big boost. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to you this morning.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any additional public comment? Hearing none? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.